Thank you and good morning to everyone. We're gonna get started now. But before we begin the council session today, I'd like to make the following announcement. Due to the continuing threat to public health from COVID-19, City Council is currently meeting remotely. We are using Microsoft Teams to make this remote meeting possible. Instructions for how the public may view the meeting and offer public comment are included in the stated meeting notice that was published in the Daily News Enquirer and Legal Intelligence prior to the meeting and can also be found on PHLcouncil.com. I now note that the hours come, the clerk will please call a row to take attendance and members that are not attended say a couple of words to make sure that your image is displayed on the screen. Mr. Decker, please call the row.
Councilwoman Bass.
Good morning, Mr. President, colleagues and the city of Philadelphia. Good morning.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Brooks.
Good morning, Council President, colleagues and the city of Philadelphia. I am present.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Dom.
Good morning, Council President, colleagues and the city of Philadelphia.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Gauthier.
Good morning, Council President and colleagues in Philadelphia, present.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Good morning, Council President, good morning colleagues and good morning to the city of sisterly love.
Good morning.
Councilman Green.
Good morning, Council President, good morning colleagues and good morning to the city of brotherly love and sisterly effectiveness.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Kim.
Good morning, Council President, good morning colleagues, I am present.
Good morning.
Councilman Johnson.
Good morning, Council President, good morning colleagues, sending out prayers and support to all of our young people impacted by senseless gun violence.
Good morning.
Councilman Jones.
Good morning, Mr. President, good morning colleagues, good morning Philadelphia, I am present.
Good morning.
Councilman O.
Good morning, Council President, good morning colleagues and good morning Madre Jesse, thank you so much for joining us today.
Good morning.
Councilman O'Neal. Councilwoman Parker.
Good morning, Mr. President, good morning colleagues and good morning Philadelphia.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Keanu N. Sanchez.
Buenos dias, good morning everyone and welcome to Madre Jesse Alejandro, good to have you here.
Buenos dias.
Councilman Squilla.
Good morning, Council President and colleagues and welcome to Mother Jesse, good to see you.
Good morning.
Councilman Thomas.
Good morning, Council President, good morning colleagues, good morning to the listening public, I'm present.
Good morning.
Council President Clark.
And good morning to you all and we're gonna get started, we've established our quorum and to give our invocation this morning, the chair recognizes Reverend Madre Jesse Alejandro of the Church of the Crucifixion. She is here today as the guest of Councilman O. I would ask all members and guests to please bow your head for the invocation. Reverend?
Good morning and God bless you all. Let us pray. Today we pray for hope for the city of Philadelphia and for our leadership. No matter what our circumstances are, no matter how frightful or desperate, Lord, today we pray for our leaders in the city of Philadelphia. Some of us has gone weary, some of us have lost hope, we have lost our ways, but as we come together in one accord to ask you for help, we ask for this city. In such a time where we find ourselves thinking about how do we bring peace and love to a city whom is in pain for so much anguish and violence? We pray, oh Lord, that you restore this city that we serve with hope and change, that you will fulfill their hearts with your spirit and give strength and courage to make the right decision for those whom you have instructed to be leaders in the city. We pray for those here today and for those that could not be here. We pray for the families and help for each and everyone in this room as well for their loved ones. We put our trust in you to show us the way of change, the way of love, the way of unity and compassion. Just like you send your son Jesus Christ to serve, we pray that you also help us to be able to serve with a pure heart. We pray, oh Lord, that if we have forgotten our ways because of our distractions in our life, that you bring us back to serve with dignity, with compassion and help, help us to discern right from wrong. We pray for a true spirit of faithfulness to do what is right and just for this city. Let our hearts, souls and minds be renewed and fulfill us with the hope and unity for the city and for the leadership that you have appointed in office. Keep us from harm and teach us to be humble and restore us wherever we are lacking. Let us remember your teaching and your faithfulness so that everyone whom you have called by name remember your love for your children. We ask you, Lord, to give the leaders of the tools that they may need to come together in agreement to meet the needs of this city. We thank you, oh Lord, for giving us another morning, another day to be able to breathe life and we ask you, oh Lord, that you breathe life again if we have forgotten how precious our lives are. We thank you for your grace and mercy upon our lives and upon the lives of each and everyone present today. Let us bring hope and bring hope to all those who may need it. Let us never forget how we made it where we are because of your love and grace upon our life. We ask, oh Lord, that you remind us who we are and what we have been called for and all of this we pray in the powerful name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, thank you so much Reverend for the spiritual guidance this morning, we really appreciate you. Our next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, February 3rd, 2022, and the chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President, I moved to the Journal for the meeting of Thursday, February 3rd, 2022, be approved.
Second.
Thank you, it's been moved in property second that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, February 3rd, 2022, stand approve, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and the Journal is approved. And our next order of business is request for leave of absence, and the chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President, on behalf of the members of council, there are no requests for leave of absence today.
Chair, thanks to Councilwoman. And the chair one more time recognizes Councilwoman Parker for motion regarding the sunshine at.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move that any of the following matters, if considered today, may be added to the agenda for this session of council and, as required by law, subsequently published on an amended agenda after the consideration of those matters. Resolutions authorizing hearings, amendments to bills on first reading, the reconsideration of a bill vetoed by or recalled from the mayor, resolutions taking substantive action to be voted on in this session, a motion to withdraw a bill or resolution that is not on the calendar, and a motion placing a bill or resolution on or returning a bill or resolution from the suspension calendar that is not listed on today's calendar. The purpose of this motion is to provide the public with notice concerning possible action by council that arose too late to be included on the calendar that was published prior to today's session.
Second.
Thank you, it's been moved in property second that the legislative matters stated by Councilwoman Parker may be added to the agenda for today should those matters arise during the course of the council session, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, motion carries, thank you very much, and our next order of business is communications. And while we ask the clerk to please read the messages from the mayor and any other communication that he may have in his possession.
From the mayor to the president, members of the council of the city of Philadelphia, I am transmitting for the consideration of your authority. A resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority, deeds conveying fee simple title two, 1433, 1454, 1428 and 1443 North Myrtlewood Street, 719, 737, 739, 741 and 743 Montgomery Avenue, 2453 North Carlisle Street, 1532 North Marston Street, 2408 North 31st Street, 2410 North 31st Street, 2412 North 31st Street, 3013, 3015 and 3108 West York Street in the 5th Councilmanic District. And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2257 Hope Street located in the 7th Councilmanic District. And a resolution and an ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year 2022 from the General Fund and the Grants Revenue Fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards and commissions to the General Fund, the Water Fund and the Aviation Fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards and commissions, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. That concludes our communications and our next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions. So by way of a reminder, we're asking that all resolutions, including previous resolutions, be placed on the final passage calendar for the next session of council unless they are being referred to committee. In our current remote environment, this procedure will provide an appropriate opportunity for public comment. I want to thank you very much in advance for your anticipated cooperation. Mr. Decker, please read the titles of the legislation that's being offered today by our members.
Yes, Mr. President. Councilwoman Parker offers two resolutions. On behalf of Council President Clark, a resolution confirming the appointment of Sophia Lee as a member of the Board of the Philadelphia Energy Authority to serve in the term ending January 1, 2023.
I'm sorry, we actually want to refer that to committee.
And a resolution recognizing February 14, 2022, as Maternal Healthcare Provider Appreciation Day. Mr. President, Councilwoman Parker would like to be recognized for a motion on this resolution.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit consideration of this resolution on today's final passage calendar.
Second.
It's been moved in property second, all in favor, said, motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Both ayes have it and that will be on today's calendar.
Thank you.
Mr. Decker, you're muted.
Sorry, Mr. President.
No problem.
Councilman Jones offers four bills entitled an ordinance amending section A 303 of the Philadelphia Code entitled demolition and relocation of structures to add additional requirements for the issuance of demolition permits for structures currently or previously used as religious facilities. And an ordinance amending section 9215 of the Philadelphia Code entitled streeteries to revise and add additional permitted locations. And an ordinance adopting an amendment to the Articles of Incorporation of the Manayunk Special Services District in Philadelphia to extend the term of that authority. And an ordinance approving a new plan, estimated costs and proposed method of assessment of the Manayunk Special Services District for and concerning business improvements and administrative services to the Manayunk Business District of the city of Philadelphia.
Those four bills will be referred to the appropriate committee. Mr. Decker, on the resolution that Councilwoman Parker introduced on my behalf with the Energy Authority, we're gonna put that on the calendar, the next session of council.
Yes, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilman Johnson offers one resolution entitled a resolution honoring Maxwell Brown for his longtime dedication to community empowerment and to mentorship of young men through his Max Out of Life Program.
Next week's calendar.
Councilwoman Sanchez offers two bills and one resolution entitled an ordinance, on behalf of Council President Clark, and ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year 2022. From the General Fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards and commissions, and the Grants Revenue Fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards and commissions, to the General Fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards and commissions, the Water Fund and the Aviation Fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards and commissions.
Further to committee?
And on her own behalf, an ordinance amending chapter 92500 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Fire Suppression System Workers to modify licensing requirements applicable to fire suppression system workers.
Further to committee?
And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2257 Hope Street located in the 7th Councilmanic District.
Next week's calendar.
Councilman Green offers one bill and one resolution entitled an ordinance approving the amendment of the fiscal year 2022 capital budget, providing for expenditures for the capital purposes of the Philadelphia Gas Works, including the supplying of funds in connection therewith, subject to certain constraints and conditions.
Is that?
That's an ordinance, Mr. President.
Yeah, referred to committee.
And a resolution encouraging the Philadelphia Board of Education to adopt and implement a civic participation and voter registration program as proposed by PA Youth Vote.
Next week's calendar.
Councilwoman Brooks offers one resolution entitled a resolution honoring the life, courage and resilience of Ona Oni Judge, whose story of escape to freedom has become a pillar in black American history for its themes of autonomy, self-actualization, pride and its particular significance in Philadelphia's abolitionist history.
Next week's calendar.
Councilman Dom offers one bill and one resolution entitled an ordinance providing for the submission to the qualified electives of the city of Philadelphia of the proposal set forth in a resolution approved by council, proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Hallmark Charter to provide that council members shall not be eligible for election for more than four terms of office.
Further to committee?
And a resolution proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Hallmark Charter to provide for a limitation of council members' terms in office to no more than four terms.
Councilman Dom, did you want to speak?
Yes, please, Council President, thank you, thank you very much. Thank you for the opportunity today to speak on this bill I'm introducing which would restrict city council members to serve no more than four terms, but starting January of 2024. And I believe that if we're truly going to be a progressive city council, we owe it to everyone we represent in this city to finally adopt term limits. Elections are really not term limits, especially when we see 15 to 25% of the people vote. But one way to overcome the lack of voter engagement is to encourage turnover and a modern look at fresh candidates on a regular basis. You know, as stated in the committee of 70, a four-term limit strikes an important balance between providing lawmakers the time to tackle several big projects and ensuring that a steady stream of new voices and perspectives enter City Hall. And also, I believe eight out of 10 of the largest cities in the United States do have term limits for their city councils. So I urge my colleagues to support and quickly pass this legislation so we can place it on the ballot for the May 2022 primary election, which will allow the citizens of the city to make the final decision. I want to thank my co-sponsors, council members Squilla, Brooks, Green, Kim and Gauthier, and look forward to discussing this in council. Thank you, Council President.
Further to committee? You're welcome.
Councilwoman Gauthier offers four resolutions entitled a resolution honoring and recognizing the work and contributions of small community activist Jamal Johnson for his tireless advocacy against gun violence in the city of Philadelphia and across the nation.
Next week's calendar?
And a resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority, deeds conveying fee simple title two, 3851 and 3855 Aspen Street, 3732 Havreford Avenue, 3825 Paramount Avenue, 3605 Mellon Street, 3607 and 3832 Mellon Street, 3858 Mount Vernon Street, 614 Sheddbrook Street, 3832 Wallace Street, 3830 Wallace Street. Located in 3rd Councilmanic District.
Next week's calendar?
And a resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority, deeds conveying fee simple title two, 1317 South Melville Street and 1328 South Melville Street in the 3rd Councilmanic District.
Next week's calendar?
And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 3625 Wallace Street located in the 3rd Councilmanic District.
Next week's calendar?
Councilman Thomas offers three resolutions entitled a resolution authorizing the Committee on Streets and Services to hold hearings regarding beets, brine and salt regarding the recipe for Philadelphia streets in winter in order to advance our interests in safe roads, healthy streams and good stewardship of resources and the taxpayer funds.
This week's calendar?
And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia City Council Committee on Commerce and Economic Development to hold hearings to better understand the local purchasing goals set by the administration in response to Councilmember Thomas's Keep It Local Bill, to assess the progress made toward that goal and to offer a forum to discuss best practices in this space going forward, to ensure that the city of Philadelphia always looks first to forward its homegrown small and medium-sized businesses when making purchasing decisions.
Mr. Decker, I'm sorry, I got distracted for a second, that was the?
Authorized hearings.
Authorized, this week's calendar?
And a resolution honoring and congratulating champion of the week and black business crawl organization, the National Marion Anderson Museum and Historical Society, on their dedication to black art and historical preservation of Marion Anderson's life and her home in Philadelphia.
Next week's calendar?
Councilman O'Neal offers one resolution entitled a resolution honoring, congratulating and thanking Darren Elgady on the occasion of his retirement from the Streets Department and his many years of service to the citizens of Philadelphia.
Next week's calendar?
Councilman Squilla offers two bills entitled an ordinance authorizing an encroachment upon East Passianke Avenue and Moore Street in the vicinity of 1801 East Passianke Avenue.
Further to committee?
And an ordinance authorizing an existing bulk window at 2519 Frankfurt Avenue.
Further to committee?
Councilwoman Bass offers one bill and two resolutions entitled an ordinance continuing the Mount Airy Business Improvement District beyond its termination date in an area that generally includes both sides of Germantown Avenue from 6300 to 7631 and certain blocks of streets that intersect that portion of Germantown Avenue and for which the Mount Airy Improvement District Incorporated, a Pennsylvania nonprofit corporation, is the Neighborhood Improvement District Management Association for the district.
Further to committee?
And a resolution initiating action to continue the Mount Airy Business Improvement District beyond its termination date in an area that generally includes both sides of Germantown Avenue from 6300 to 7631 and certain blocks of streets that intersect that portion of Germantown Avenue for which Mount Airy Improvement District Incorporated, a Pennsylvania nonprofit corporation, serves as the Neighborhood Improvement District Management Association for the district.
Further to committee?
And a resolution urging federal policymakers to ensure that individuals with sickle cell disease have access to all medications and forms of treatment for sickle cell disease, no matter their form of healthcare insurance.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. Sickle cell disease is a disease in which a person's body produces abnormally shaped red blood cells that resemble a crescent or a sickle. That abnormal shape causes the cells to get stuck in blood vessels, blocking blood flow and causing pain and organ damage. Recent studies suggest that 30% of sickle cell patients experience premature death with an estimated life expectancy of just 54 years of age. Unfortunately, a disproportionate number of sickle cell patients are African-American and Hispanic. I am introducing this resolution to make clear the seriousness of sickle cell disease. Knowledge is power and too few people know about this disease. So every chance we get, we must promote awareness of it. On top of promoting awareness, federal lawmakers must do their part and fight for all people to have access to quality healthcare, not leaving behind those with lesser-known ailments like sickle cell disease. And they must ensure that all people, no matter their race or form of health insurance, have access to the necessary medications, therapies and treatments for sickle cell disease. This resolution formally urges them to do just that. And finally, I want to thank council members Parker, Dom, Gauthier, Brooks, Gilmore Richardson, Jones, Squilla, Sanchez and Green for co-sponsoring this resolution and joining the call for equal access to quality healthcare for sickle cell patients. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Next week's calendar?
Councilman O offers two resolutions, entitled a resolution recognizing and honoring Aaron Turner and Eric Schroeder of the 18th Police District for their courageous actions which led to the confiscation of an illegal firearm and stolen vehicle.
Next week's calendar?
And a resolution declaring March 6th as Lithuanian Independence Day in the city of Philadelphia in honor of its restoration of the state day on February 16th and restoration of Independence Day on March 11th.
Next week's calendar?
There are no other bills or resolutions being offered today by the members, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Decker.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Could I be marked present as Councilman O'Neal?
Absolutely. Let the record reflect Councilman O'Neal as present. And that concludes our introduction of bills and resolutions. We have no reports from the committee today, so our next order of business is consideration of the calendar. There being no bills on the first reading calendar, the chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker for motion concerning the resolutions on the final passage calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda to consider the following resolutions on the final passage calendar today. They are resolution numbers 220012, 220084, 220085, 220086, 220087, 220088, 220089, 220092, 220095 and 220096.
Second.
Thank you, it's been moved in property second that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda, consider the resolution just read by Councilwoman Parker, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Ayes have it, motion carries and we will consider the resolution consent agenda shortly. Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Parker for the purpose of calling in bills and resolutions on a regular second reading and final passage calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. In addition to the resolutions being considered on a consent agenda, the following resolutions and bills are being called up from the second reading and final passage calendars today. They are numbers 220090, 220093 and 220003. All of the bills and resolutions are being held, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman. We will move towards our public comment session, but before we take up our public comment, we're gonna give our technology professionals five, 10 minutes to connect all our speakers. We'll take a brief break, thank you very much, we'll be right back. Thank you very much. And we are back. Before we start with our first speaker, chair recognizes Councilwoman Gim.
Thank you so much, Council President. I have urgent council business that takes me out and would like to be recognized as voting aye on all bills and resolutions.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Let the record reflect that. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President.
You're welcome. Mr. Decker, please read the first name on our list. Oh, I'm sorry. Hold on one second. Give you focus the script. So now that everyone's connected to the meeting, before considering the resolution and bill, we have before us today, we're going to consider public comment. I'd like to tell the speakers what the lay of the land is. So our public comment must concern matters on the second reading and final passes calendars for possible action at the session of councils. A speaker on any of those matters must sign up in order to testify. You must call 215-686-3406 by 3:00 PM the day before the session to sign up for public comment. When you call, we will take your name, phone number, the number of the legislative item you are commenting on, and whether you are in support of or against the legislation, and add your name to the list. We will then telephone each person on the list during the council session and invite them to our remote meeting. Under ideal circumstances, which is today, we will have three minutes to speak. But however, from time to time, the limit may vary from the session to session based on the volume of individuals. In order to be fair, all those wishing to speak, I intend to hold faithfully to the established time limit. And once invited to the meeting and asked to begin your testimony, a timer will be started. We will monitor your remaining time throughout your testimony. And when there are 30 seconds remaining to your time, you will be reminded of this. And once your allotted time has passed, you will be asked to conclude your remarks. And shortly thereafter, you will be disconnected and muted. Also reserve the right to limit the number of speakers where repetitious comments are being made in the same subject matter, which could affect callbacks in our public comment session. And please be aware, this public meeting is being recorded. And because the meeting is public, participants and viewers have no reasonable expectation of privacy. So by continuing to be in the meeting, you are considering to be recorded. Mr. Decker, I will now ask you to call the first name that is speaking today.
First speaker we have today, Mr. President, is Jerry Ballmer commenting on 220012.
And good morning. State your name for the record and please proceed with your testimony.
Yes, good morning, council members. My name is Jerry Ballmer, representing the nonprofit organization Science and Donation and Transplant. And I'm here to speak in support of resolution 220012. I would like to thank Councilwoman Cheryl Parker for introducing this resolution, calling on Secretary Xavier Becerra in the Department of Health and Human Services to reconsider implementation of a rule instituted by the Trump administration and to develop a national task force of recognized experts in the organ donation and transplantation committee to ensure equitable access to resources through established and trusted organ procurement organizations, particularly in communities of color. The council recognizes severe ongoing health equity issues for people of color in this country, this region, and this city. According to the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services Office of Minority Health, the number of organ transplants performed on African-Americans in 2019 was 25.8% of the number of African-Americans currently waiting for a transplant. The number of transplants performed on the white Americans was 47.6% of the number currently waiting for a transplant. In the closing hours of the Trump administration, a group of venture capitalists successfully sought to undermine the nonprofit organ procurement system in the United States. The federal rule adopted does little to encourage better practices and better cooperation in the donation and transplant system. The federal rule at worst opens the door to a hedge fund-driven takeover of the organ donation nonprofit network, making way for a privatized system that benefits the wealthy and VIPs at the expense of those less connected. Thank you for your urging of the protection and promotion of a fair and equitable organ transplant system that believes everyone deserves access to a quality health care system, not just those with hedge fund connections. Thank you again for your support and have a blessed day.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The next speaker is Raymond Torres commenting on 210956.
Good morning. I'm Raymond Torres from Mount Airy neighborhood. I would like to speak in favor of the Philadelphia Public Financing Authority Bill Number 210956. I am a member of the Philadelphia Public Banking Coalition. In 2012, I attended the first national public banking conference here in Philadelphia, and I've been working ever since promote the idea of public banking. Franklin Philadelphia first promoted the idea of public banking and made Philadelphia the financial center of the colonies. In 1980, I had the opportunity to transfer the assets from Crusader Savings and Loan into the Westfield Community Federal Credit Union that the neighbors set up. Crusader was redlining our community and loaning money out to Rosemont. I experienced the tremendous difference of recycling our savings into building our community in West Philadelphia. I worked with Leroy Robinson, the then-president of the Baltimore Business Association, and together we built a strong, vibrant community. The credit union became the West Philadelphia branch of the Philadelphia Federal Credit Union, which now recycles over $1 billion into the Philadelphia community. I am proud of the impact we had on Cedar Park neighborhood. We were able to build a strong, vibrant, integrated community. One of the benefits of giving credit to a community is it also gives the community hope that we can have a brighter future. This has had the impact of lowering crime, when especially young people see that there are opportunities for them to have good jobs and a positive future. Also, my experience with the First United Methodist Church of Germantown, we worked in Haiti to build a microfinance bank called Foncozé. After almost 30 years, this bank has 40 branches, 20,000 members, and recycles about $100 million into Haitian economy. Father Joseph, who founded this bank, is now building wealth in rural Haiti. Father Joseph is coming to stay with me in Philadelphia, and I hope to show him that we in Philadelphia can also build wealth in Philadelphia. I believe the Philadelphia Banking Authority is the kind of infrastructure we need in Philadelphia to give our young people hope and to move Philadelphia off the list of one of the poorest major cities in the country. I ask your support in moving this legislation bill 210956 forward. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The next speaker is Peter Winslow commenting on 210956.
Good morning. State your name for the record and please proceed with your testimony.
My name is Peter Winslow. I'm a resident of Philadelphia. Thank you, President Clark, and members of city council, for this opportunity to provide public comments in support of bill number 210956, as amended, to establish the Philadelphia Public Financial Authority. And special thanks to Councilmember Green and the members of the Finance Committee for unanimously passing this bill out of committee. The Philadelphia Public Financial Authority can increase the resiliency of the city and its businesses. In response to a pandemic, a flood, a fire, and industrial accident, the Financial Authority can help to provide quick, flexible, reliable financial assistance. Robust recovery from disaster is complex, of course. Coordinated action by government, businesses, and citizens is essential for success. While not the only factor, financing is an essential element. Nevertheless, too often in the face of a crisis, lenders are unable or unwilling to provide financing for rebuilding property, replacing equipment, and restocking inventory, even for established customers, especially for black-owned businesses and low-income communities. Why? In the aftermath of a disaster, confidence in the capacities of the community has been shaken. Uncertainty about the future leads to the perception of risks as being high. Caution results in a wait-and-see attitude just at a time when bold action is needed. The Financial Authority can reassure lenders and the community that recovery financing will be available. For example, bridge loans will be provided in advance of receiving insurance proceeds. Credit enhancement will be provided to mitigate the uncertainty created by the disaster. Such assurance will restore confidence that financing will be available when disaster strikes. Knowledge that the Financial Authority will be there to help in times of adversity will make the community feel more secure. Indeed, the community will, in fact, be more secure. Moreover, the Financial Authority will be able to act quickly and decisively on its own initiative. Consider some of the actions the Bank of North Dakota has taken in response to the pandemic. A moratorium on student loan prepayments was granted unilaterally. A payroll protection program was put in place even before the Small Business Administration Public Protection Program was organized. A small employer loan fund was established to help businesses restock inventory and quantities that enabled them to operate at pre-pandemic levels. A COVID recovery program was implemented to mitigate economic injury as a result of the pandemic caused by such factors as executive orders to close businesses, decreased customer base, decreased revenue, inability to meet term debt payments, and supply chain issues. An interest buydown program is created to help businesses manage their existing debt. The Financial Authority can respond to an acute crisis when it occurs. Meanwhile, the Financial Authority can address the chronic crisis of the city into generational poverty, financial insecurity, inadequate housing, lack of credit, and so forth.
Can you kind of wrap it up? Your time is... Can you wrap it up? Your time is expired.
Sure. Please establish the Philadelphia Public Financial Authority as an investment in the future of Philadelphia, the empowerment of our communities, and the prosperity of our citizens. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The final speaker is Tiffany Green commenting on 220087.
Hi.
Good morning. State your name for the record.
Good morning. I'm Tiffany Green. And yes, I... Because this is more city properties being transferred into the Philadelphia Land Bank without any unknown future as to the usage. We would like to call on new legislation for public hearings on public city properties being transferred into the Philadelphia Land Bank so that the community can have advanced notice as to these properties will be used for market rate or community usage. Reason why we have decided, reason why we are saying this, because we would like to meet with our Councilman Johnson to complete our discussions regarding the land bank transaction for 1622.3 Avenue, okay, preferably by next Friday, February 18, 2022. Currently, we have no indoor recreation amenities. The neighbors would like to see this property. We feel we need this property for recreational activities. This property was a tax pair of property that was disposed for recreational usage. The land was to be used for indoor recreation center and dance center, and we would like to see that land be continually used for this purpose. We feel we should have equal access to public property for, to, in order to move forward with an indoor recreation center. Many of our parents feel that children should not have to walk five to eight blocks for an indoor recreation facility. That is very unsafe and for our youth in the community. We have, we are a very densely populated area, and indoor recreation center would be ideal for the immediate area. At this point, again, we would like to say, we would like to request to complete our meeting with Councilman Johnson regarding the land bank transaction for a property 1622-40.3's Avenue. And the nearby neighbors will be reaching out again, and we would like for him to grant us that meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, Ruth Wilson is not connected or speaking?
No, council support was unable to connect her.
Unable? Okay. Thank you. And Tiffany Green was the last speaker, I understand?
Yes, Mr. President. There are no other speakers in the public comment list.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Decker. That concludes our public comment for today. Now, consider today's resolution consent agenda. I will ask Mr. Decker to read the titles of all the resolutions on the consent agenda. After each title is read, any member may object to the inclusion of the resolution on the resolution consent agenda. Upon such an objection, without debate, the resolution will be immediately removed from the resolution consent agenda and placed on today's regular, regular final passage calendar. Mr. Decker, please read the titles of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda.
Resolution number 220012 entitled a resolution calling on Secretary Xavier Becerra and the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services to reconsider the implementation of a rule instituted by the prior administration that could upend our nation's system of organ procurement, particularly in communities of color, and to include the vast specific needs of the organ transplant system in analyzing and improving the metrics and outcomes of organ procurement organizations. And resolution number 220084 entitled a resolution honoring and congratulating Pennsylvania athletes Summer Britcher, Andrew Hill, and Brian O'Neal, and wishing them well as they compete with Team USA at the 2022 Winter Olympics in Benning , Jane. And resolution number 220085 entitled a resolution designating the week of January 30, 2022, to February 5, 2022, as Catholic Schools Week in the city of Philadelphia, and further honoring and recognizing Catholic education throughout the city and all Catholic schools in the 4th Councilmatic District of the city of Philadelphia. And resolution number 220086 entitled a resolution recognizing Chad Dion Lassiter for being named Pennsylvania's 2021 Social Worker of the Year. And resolution number 220087, a resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority these conveying fee simple Title II, 1537 South Lambert Street, 1514 South Opel Street. fifteen fourteen South Opel Street, fifteen twenty South Opel Street, and two thousand eight Wilder Street in the second council manic district. And resolution number two two oh oh eight eight entitled a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of thirty-two fifteen, thirty-two seventeen, thirty-two twenty-one, thirty-two twenty-three Shelbourne Street, nine oh one, and nine oh five East West Morland Street located in the seventh council manic district. And resolution number two two oh oh eight nine entitled a resolution honoring the labor and power of Black Rosie Ruthie Wilson, whose critical industrial work at the Philadelphia Navy Yard, along with six hundred thousand other Black Rosies, helped win World War II, and whose labors and wages served as the launching pad of the Black middle class. And resolution number two two oh oh nine two entitled a resolution honoring and congratulating Champion of the Week Beach Community Services on the development of the Philadelphia Black Biz Directory and community engagement in North Philadelphia during the Fourth Annual Black Business Crawl. And resolution number two two oh oh nine five entitled a resolution calling on the City of Philadelphia to explore ways to assist residents in maintaining the infrastructure of their property. And resolution number two two oh oh nine six entitled a resolution declaring Philadelphia stands with Ukraine and urging the White House and the United States Congress to fully support Ukraine amid hostile acts and military buildup along its border from Russia.
Thank you. Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker for motion to adopt each of the resolutions on the resolution agenda.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of each of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda. Second.
Thank you. It is being moved to second that each of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda be adopted. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it. And the consent agenda has been adopted. We've now considered the bills and resolutions on a regular second reading and final passes calendar. Mr. Decker, please read the title of resolution number two two zero zero nine oh.
A resolution honoring and celebrating the life and monumental legacy of community and religious leader Imam Asim Abdur Rashid of Masjid Mujahideen, who passed away on January twenty-nine, 2022.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Garcia.
Thank you. Council President, before I call for the adoption, I wanted to make a few remarks, if that's okay?
Absolutely.
Okay. Good morning, council colleagues in the City of Philadelphia. Last week, Councilmember Jones and I introduced a resolution to honor the life and legacy of a true Titan and community leader, Imam Asam Abdur Rashid. Imam Abdur Rashid was a religious scholar and dedicated his entire adult life to bettering the lives of those around him as the Quran called him to. As Imam of West Philadelphia's Masjid Mujahideen for more than thirty-five years, he served as a counselor, mediator, and steadfast public servant who showed love and compassion to the members of his community, in addition to being a fierce advocate against the violence in the city to which he dedicated his life. This past summer, I had the opportunity to hear the Imam speak at a community event held in the wake of a tragic mass shooting on Sixtieth Street and saw firsthand how people believed in his words and in his mission of peace and prosperity for all of our city's residents, but especially our children. As many of us do, he believed that the youth are our future and that we cannot better our society unless we invest in our kids. The Imam leaves behind a decades-long legacy of unwavering worship and service for which he will forever be remembered, not only by his wife Jamila and twenty children, but by the entire City of Philadelphia. And so I wanted to take this time to honor the Imam for his faithful dedication to his community. And I also wanted to, if it's okay, I wanted to offer an opportunity for Councilmember Jones to say anything that he'd like to offer.
Thank you, Member. Imam Asam was the type of leader that was a humble man. He could have walked around with his title and not connected to people, but the way I actually knew Council President was at Thirty-third Street when he had the stable there, and he provided young people an opportunity to experience horse life and breaking of horses and cleaning of horses and all of those good things that you couldn't... Huckleberry Finn couldn't have had a better childhood than some of the young men and women that came out of that area. Secondly, he loved animals. He loved dogs. He loved horses, but he did not love my horse. My horse was a troubled horse, and Imam Asam used to shoe horses, and that's one of the things a lot of people don't know. And quite frankly, he punched my horse in the face. And the horse deserved it, but because it kept kicking and bucking. But I say that to say he was strong yet gentle. He was connected yet a leader. He used to always offer prayer at our iftars in City Hall and did it in a way that did not alienate other religions. It brought people together. So he will surely be missed, and may God Allah be pleased with his works and his soul.
Thank you so much, and thank you, Council President, for the opportunity to speak on this resolution. And with that, I call for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. The move to probably second, all in favor of said resolution indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Motion passes, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of two two zero zero nine three.
A resolution honoring and recognizing Edward Ed McBride, PICO External Affairs Manager on the occasion of his passing.
Chair recognizes Councilman Scola.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to just say a few words. I'm not obviously a speaker on a lot of these resolutions, but I think this is important to say a few words just before we move this for adoption. So Ed McBride was a person who worked throughout the City of Philadelphia. Working for PICO, he was a shining light to all us, not only representatives here in city council, but all residents of the city. He always stood up for what was needed. He was a person that was always there whether you needed PICO to be a part of a community event or whether it was a problem with electrical outlets or whatever net was necessary. He is somebody who will be surely missed. But one thing about Ed that he did was he knew when he was moving up through the ranks and moving to different positions, he was always able to get somebody in his place to be able to teach them the ropes and show them what was so important to us as not only elected officials but residents of the City of Philadelphia. He was something that we, as City of Philadelphia, should cherish. He is a person who took Philadelphia through the hard times and was always able to make people smile. I want to say that knowing him made me a better person, and I'm so happy I got a chance to work with him during these years and thank his family for allowing him to be a part of Philadelphia and the growth of our city. So thank you. I know there might be a couple others that want to make a statement before we put this for a vote.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Conona Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be brief, but I just kind of wanted to echo for council folks who come get... when you first get elected and you have to start working with all of the interdepartmental agencies and the external ones, you know, those of us who worked in council, I've known Ed for twenty-plus years, you know, just a gentleman, always in looking to do service. He was his own elected official back home, served on his own county, so was always available during storms, during just really trying times, and, you know, never lost his cool, always looked for a way to facilitate and serve the residents of Philadelphia and the region because once he got promoted, it was around the region. You know, my husband worked at PICO for some time, and the folks at PICO are amazing, and Ed was just, you know, just a great gentleman. And to his family, I also want to say thank you, was always available to provide advice and guidance on anything, and we should all aspire to be someone like Ed McBride. And to the PICO family, you know, we just say to all of you, and thank you for allowing Ed to have been part of council for so, so, so many years. So thank you very much, Council President, and Councilmember Scola for putting forth this resolution.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you so much, Mr. President, and I also wanted to rise in support of this resolution and thank our colleague, Councilmember Scola, for introducing this resolution, remembering all of our friend Ed McBride from PICO. I happened to meet Ed back in nineteen ninety-nine when I started in city council as a high school intern, and he has always been the same. He's always been a consummate professional, has been a wonderful teacher, not only for me, but for his colleagues at PICO where they called him Mr. Mayor at PICO. And he was always just a teacher in helping us learn the ropes and learning the ins and outs of providing a good quality service to our constituents and really navigating city government and working with other agencies to get the job done on behalf of the people we serve. So I had to rise in support of this resolution and remembering Ed and just give a shout-out to his wife Kathy, his daughters, and his entire family. Thank you for lending Ed to us for all of these years. We will certainly miss him, but his legacy will continue in the work that we all seek to do on behalf of the people we serve. So thank you so much, Mr. President, and thank you to my colleague, Councilmember Scola, for this resolution.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I'll be very brief. I also send my condolences to all of us to the McBride family. Ed is someone that we all got to know. The fact that he was at PICO for fifty-two years, we're never going to see that type of commitment, I think, again, and type of relationship he had with so many people. And I mean, I saw how he interacted with his colleagues and so many, and no matter what level or station in life, everyone had an Ed McBride story because he was that type of person, and I'm sure many of us have multiple stories that we had constituents or other issues, was called him on his cell phone, and he always said, "I'll get right back to you," and he always got the issue resolved. And the fact that type of dedication and service is something that's going to be missed and that we no longer have here in the City of Philadelphia, and he truly embodied the type of public-private partnership we need to get things done in our city, and he will be missed by all of us in council, so many members, and people around the City of Philadelphia. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman Green. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Yeah, thank you, Council President. I just want to echo the sentiments of my colleagues, giving honor and blessings and support to the family of Ed McBride. Ed McBride was just a genuine stand-up guy. I spent many a days down in South Philadelphia at a variety of different events such as the South Philadelphia Business Association, the St. Patty's Day Parade, and a couple different events in my time in council, hanging out with Ed McBride, and he's just one of those people who wears his heart on his sleeves and is an all-around good guy. And in our profession, we meet a whole lot of people, people come and go, Mark, I mean, on a day-to-day basis, and so I've been very, very acute at judging people's character, right? And this is a guy who was as genuine as they can come. And so, Mark, thank you for honoring him, and he's definitely going to be missed because he was one of the people that just brought a good aspect of life and appreciation of life to all he encountered. So God bless you, Ed McBride, and thank you for all the things you've done for the City of Philadelphia.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to concur with all of our colleagues in saying a special thank you to Councilmember Scola for introducing this resolution honoring and celebrating the life of Ed McBride. I met Mr. President Ed McBride in nineteen ninety when I was seventeen years old, and I was interning in the offices of Councilwoman Marion Tesco. And my first constituent services issue that I had to resolve, one was water, but it was also electric, and the person told us that they needed an agreement. And sometimes when people call, you might not get all of the information accurate the first time because they may not give you all of the information. And so Ed McBride, his number and name was up on the wall to call, and I called him, and he said, "Well, this person has already had three agreements." And but guess what? We are going to... we are going to work." I didn't know what to do. I said, "Wait." He said, "Don't worry about it. Let me go to work," and he did exactly that. So special thank you. And then on the weekend, somebody said that because we go out, people see us everywhere, they call us all of the time, and when they call us in the middle of a crisis, they don't want to hear from us that we can't get it done. But we couldn't have got it done as it related to PICO without working with Ed McBride. So special thanks to his family and to all members of the PICO family. I know they are having a tough time, but his legacy will live on.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. I want to join with my colleagues and I'm, you know, just think what else can be said about Ed McBride because I think so many wonderful things have been said and about how much of an impact that he had on all of us and his involvement with this council and with other councils as well. But I really wanted to just thank his family for sharing Ed with us because he was someone who was... you could pick up your phone and call him day or night, and he was always there. So I really just wanted to say to his family to offer my condolences and all of our condolences, and Ed will really, truly be missed. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
If you... I'm not afraid of the dark, but if you ever were in a storm and a tree knocks out the power line and it's dark, you appreciate knowing Ed McBride. And then he always gave you an accurate timeline of when the transformer would be repaired or this, that, and you, you know, particularly on a block I was on, on the whole neighborhood because you're an elected official, thinks you can go and reach and turn the switch on yourself to make things bright again. But in that process during a summer heated night in the dark, when the lights finally do come on, Ed McBride is a name that you are thankful for. Right after God, then Ed McBride, because he always kept you informed as to where the situation was, didn't overestimate the time it would take, and so he gave us accurate and truthful information. He will be missed.
Absolutely. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President. I got to know Ed my first year on council, so I've known him over four decades, and he was incredible. I... one of a kind. I don't know how to describe it. Everyone... I agree with what everyone said, and I had the good fortune to work with him longer than anyone else. There is something to be said for getting reelected when you have people like Ed you can work with. I got to know him personally, socially. His wife Kathy and he were just the perfect couple. They were as natural with each other as can be. They got each other. He got her, she got him. Ed could tell you stories about his brother and the building of the... of the baseball, you know, the Citizens Bank Building. He was a trades member. I think it was a roofer, but I'm not sure, but he had stories that would just make you laugh like crazy. Got to have dinner with him several times with our wives and was ready to do it in the spring. We talked about it about a month ago. And Ed could take an issue like that PICO was trying and Exelon were trying to buy a electric company in New Jersey, or there was a dig regulation issue or something like... he knew that... that material, that subject matter, as much as he knew how to call the guy down at the bottom that would come out and do the work on your project that you needed done quickly. His breadth of experienced knowledge and how the PICO member population reacted to him when he called, no matter what it was. And his last mentee that he mentored, Jose Agary, he told me when Jose... and he probably told other members that, "Don't worry. He's solid." worry. He's solid. Um, and it will just keep, if you got a problem, just call me because it, we work together. This, this young man is, is terrific." And you know what? Jose was fantastic. He just got promoted, um, and somebody's gotta fill his shoes. But Ed was as good a person and as good a husband and father as he was a member of the Pico family that all of us relied on and relied on, um, because we knew we were gonna get a result. And he's gonna get back to us. And old school, new school, it doesn't matter. Ed could handle it. And, um, it's just sad that he didn't get to enjoy his retirement, uh, with Kathy and, uh, uh, but, you know, he's, he's in a good place, I'm sure. And, uh, I appreciate the time to speak, uh, and, uh, I appreciate all the comments from my colleagues because I agree with all of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Um, yeah, Ed was an awesome person over the decades that he worked at Pico and as staffers and as elected officials. Well, we all got to take credit for getting the lights turned on after hours of blackouts throughout the city of Philadelphia. And it was Ed that got it done. And I just wanna thank, thank him so much and, 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 and all the, the things that he's done for all of us in the city, uh, not recognized by the general population, but he was truly an awesome person. Um, before we go to the bill, um, I, I, I have to call on Councilwoman Kendra Brooks to talk about that awesome picture behind her. Um, we were actually gonna have a, uh, Ms. Ruth Wilson was gonna call in, but somehow got, was not able to be connected. And I actually, I didn't know who the picture was. I thought Councilwoman Brooks was sending the signals to people about, "Don't mess with me," right? But, uh, but Councilwoman, real, real quick, can you just kinda briefly touch, since we weren't able to connect Ms. Wilson, can you kinda talk?
Yes. Um, so, this, they call us the Black Ruthie. She proposed, Black Rosies. Um, she prefers be called Ruth, not Ruthie. She said her grandmother used to call her Ruthie, and she's not in trouble. I had a conversation with her last night. She's gonna be a hundred years old in April.
Wow.
And she was so honored to know that we were recognizing her work. And she said, "I didn't think I was doing anything great. I was just going to work every day." And that's kinda representative of all the black women that paved the way, um, doing the difficult jobs during World War II. And I just wanted to make sure, in the honor of Black History Month, that we honor her. And I have a series of women that I'll be honoring. But it's just so amazing that we have our own right here in Philadelphia, um, kind of excited, paving the way and just being that great example. As she said, it doesn't look like her, but it's a good resemblance of what she looks like now. So, hopefully, we'll be able to get her a call in next week. Uh, but yeah, she said, "Thank you so much to everyone for even recognizing her, just being a hard worker." So, thank you, Councils.
Thank you. We'll, we'll figure it out. We'll get the technology professionals that we referenced to figure out some technology to get it on. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Did we move the adoption of the, uh, Ed McBride?
Yeah. Yeah, we, uh, we did not. Uh, we got a little...
Still moved.
Caught up in recognizing the great gentleman. Councilman Swilla, can you move?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, uh, with a heavy heart, we move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and probably second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Eyes have it, and that resolution is enthusiastically adopted. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Decker, can you please read the title of Bill Number Two-Two-Zero-Zero-Three?
An Ordinance Amending Chapter Twenty-Five Hundred of the Philadelphia Code Intended to Councilmatic Districts by Revising the Boundaries of the Councilmatic Districts Under Certain Terms and Conditions.
This bill hadn't been read on two different days. The question now, shall the bill pass finally? Uh, Mr. Decker, call the rule.
Councilwoman Bass?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Aye.
Councilman Dom?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gattia?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gimm?
Is voting aye. Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman O?
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil?
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kendrona Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilman Swilla?
Aye.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Council President Clark?
Aye. Eyes are sixteen, and nays are zero. Majority of all members have been voting affirm to the bill passes. Mr. Decker, you have any additional resolutions?
Yes, Mr. President. I have a resolution recognizing February fourteen, two thousand twenty as a maternal health care provider appreciation day introduced today by Councilwoman Parker.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
Second. It's been moved and probably second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Streets and Services to hold hearings regarding Beats, Brian and Salt, regarding the recipe for Philadelphia streets in winter, in order to advance our interests in safe roads, healthy streams, and good stewardship of resources and the taxpayer funds, introduced today by Councilman Thomas.
Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Thank you, Council President. As the Chair of Streets and Services Committee and as someone who's, uh, been enthusiastically focused on, uh, the infrastructure issues surrounding our city, I enthusiastically, uh, move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and enthusiastically properly seconded. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Eyes have it. Motion carries, and that has been adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia City Council Committee on Commerce and Economic Development to hold hearings to better understand the local purchasing goals set by the administration in response to Councilmember Thomas's Keep It Local bill, to assess the progress made toward that goal and to offer a forum to discuss best practices in this space going forward, to ensure that the city of Philadelphia always looks first to forward its homegrown small and medium-sized businesses when making purchasing decisions, introduced today by Councilman Thomas.
Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and probably second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage. Come to Mr. President.
Thank you very much. That concludes our calendar for today. And as we move to our speeches, uh, prior to recognizing members regarding, I will note for the record, at this time, we will use the chat feature available in Microsoft's team to allow members to signify that they wish to be recognized. In order to comply with the Sunshine Act, the chat feature must only be used for this particular purpose. Uh, so we now have speeches on behalf of the minority, and I believe Councilman O.
Yes, thank you very much, Council President. Uh, I have two things. First, I'd just like to send my, uh, condolences to the McBride family. And of course, as was said by many and, and thought by everyone here, a wonderful gentleman, and, uh, certainly, uh, he has earned his place, uh, in heaven. Uh, secondly, is a unfortunate thing to talk about, and, and let me first, uh, thank my colleagues, uh, Councilmembers Jones and Johnson for, uh, meeting with me and District Attorney Larry Krasner and the, uh, Office of the Managing Director and others as we dealt with the very serious problem, all of us here on council, of, uh, uh, people, in this case, mothers, being targeted by, um, uh, uh, violence, uh, simply because they have a child who cooperated with law enforcement. Um, and, 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 and a woman in particular who did speak to the news, um, was being shot at, not once, not twice, shot at. And her daughter, uh, was being targeted as well. And the failing of our effort comes to this. While we did in council approve a half million dollars for the relocation of this, uh, mother and her children, it didn't work out. Um, she was never moved out of, uh, her general neighborhood. Uh, people quickly were able to identify who she was. Her daughter continued to get physically beaten at her school to the point the daughter would not go to school. And then, uh, DHS got involved because the daughter was not going to school because she was being threatened and beaten. Last night, I got an emergency call, uh, because she was arrested, the mother, with a gun. She got a gun because that's where she was at, at that point in her life. Um, and with that, four other mothers that I was supposed to meet with are not coming forward. This is a failing. It's, it, there's no bad intentions here on a part of government, but this is not a witness protection issue. This is not two days or four days or one week about following. This is a relocation issue. You have to move the entire family. We cannot move the student to a school because the mother and her other children have not been moved. And it is difficult to coordinate all of this around a system that is dealing with, uh, placing people temporarily for testimony. There has to be a completely new system. It cannot be done by the same people. Uh, it has been a failure in this city. And anyway, um, this is something that council has addressed. I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm proud to say, we have addressed it. And I appreciate, um, the District Attorney and the police and the sheriff and everyone getting together. But we're gonna have to get back together and come up with something different with some different people that are, that, that understand, you gotta move a family for a year. They have to be moved, the entire group of them. Anyway, thank you everyone for that, and, and, and I look forward to getting back on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Brooks.
Thank you, Council President. Um, every year, I look forward to Black History Month because as someone who comes out of education activism, I firmly believe in the power of learning from our past to build a better future. And since our children are our future, my office has partnered with the School District of Philadelphia, the African American Museum, and the Mural Arts Project to host the educational movie screening and panel for Philadelphia students and community members. Tonight at five PM, I invite my colleagues, their children, and the viewing public to a virtual screening of the movie Thirteenth and a panel discussion. The panel will include directly impacted people, students, activists, and local community leaders, and will cover mass incarceration, racial justice, and the true meaning of liberation. And as we look back on how far we've come, it's important that we reflect on and discuss how much further we have to push. And I think this event tonight will be a powerful opportunity for our city's young people to play a leading role in envisioning how we can get to a better future. Um, for more information, folks can visit my social media pages or visit the African American Museum's website to register for free. Um, and in the spirit of education, I also wanna thank again my colleagues for joining me in honoring the labor and power of Ruth Wilson, also known as Black Rosie. This month, my office is introducing a series of resolutions honoring overlooked black Philadelphia women who made an important contribution to our city and our country. Ms. Ruth and six hundred thousand black women did essential, often difficult, jobs during World War II. They have been dubbed Black Rosies for their likeness to Rosie the Riveter, but the different way they are treated at the time by history. Black Rosies were neglected by our nation's retelling of a wartime period, and we were excluded from women's rights movement. However, even though they experienced this low wages, racism, structural barriers, they performed critical roles in fighting racism at home, Nazism abroad, and sexism everywhere. Last year, ninety-nine-year-old Ruth Wilson was invited back to her former work site at the Naval Shipyard, where she was honored and given a portrait by artist Regina Cook, in which the iconic Rosie the Riveter was reimagined as a black woman. And Ms. Ruth is the face in the campaign and also the photo behind me. You can see the powerful portrait in the background on my team screen here. So, today, we celebrate all the Black Rosies and give our gratitude to Philadelphia's own Black Rosie, Ms. Ruth Wilson. And I want to personally say thank you to Ms. Ruth on the behalf of the city and know that she is watching us today. She intended to speak during public comment but was unfortunately unable to connect. And we're going to try to, um, have her comment next week so we can hear from this twelve, trailblazing black woman. And thank you so much, Council President, and thank you, colleagues.
Thank, thank you so much, Councilwoman. Uh, speeches on behalf of the majority. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
I just wanna rise to, um, support my colleague David O. on this issue, um, of witness protection, witness relocation, um, and without those two things, there is no justice. If you remember in the one-hundred shooter report, one of the critical issues is witnesses showing up in court to pursue justice. If there is fear, if there is fear of retaliation, if there is fear of intimidation and brutality to your siblings, it does not work. And so, everybody, um, ha, has a responsibility to figure this out, um, whether we, um, utilize other municipalities and their public housing authorities to move people from one city, uh, to another, whether it is using HUD rehabbed properties, uh, in other parts of, uh, Pennsylvania, um, or, or other states to do that. But we just need to figure it out. I, I believe that it's gonna require some federal dollars and/or support because if we're using vouchers, we need to get a pot pool of vouchers to be able to move these people readily. We, 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 we went up to a half, a half a million dollars for this effort, and I wanna thank Member Johnson, um, and, and all of council for supporting that. But when you look at the number of just homicides in the city of Philadelphia last year and assume that everybody in every one of those cases, there might be a witness, it broke down to something like three hundred dollars a move. And I don't know, uh, last time it wa, I, I checked, it wa, the average rent in the city of Philadelphia was like eleven hundred dollars, uh, first month, that, last month. Security deposits would eat that up. You couldn't even afford the truck to move the bedding, um, and the furniture from our house. So, we have to rethink how important witness protection is in the pursuit of justice. And, um, so, um, thank you, uh, Member O, for being the vanguard of this issue. Uh, but we got your back.
Thank you, Councilman. Um, I do not see anybody else teed up for speeches on behalf of the majority. That being the case, Chair recognizes Councilman Jones for motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that council stand adjourned until Thursday, February seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, at ten AM.
Second.
Move it in second to council stand adjourned until Thursday, February seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, at ten AM. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Eyes have it. Motion carries. Thank you all very much, and please be safe.
Thank you, Mr. President.